Good evening. Tonight is Wednesday, December 9th, 2020. It is 6:03 PM. And I'd like to welcome everybody to this special Board of Education meeting regarding hybrid schedules and what families can expect so they can know which to choose for themselves. So we have a lot of folks here tonight. Mr. Guarino, are you ready to call the roll? Oh, I forgot one thing. That we're holding this meeting via Zoom pursuant to Executive Order 202004, Section 8, and Emergency Order 12, Section 3. Okay, now, Mr. Guarino.
Okay. Raymond Guarino is here. Paula Johnson.
Present.
Sandra Zim.
Present.
Jennifer Bishop.
Here.
Sharon Giulio.
Here.
Jessica Brown.
Here.
Heather Raymond.
Here.
Dottie Oden.
Here.
Gloria Timmons is not here tonight. Okay.
She's not coming tonight. She did call me.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Others present, Dr. Mosley.
Here.
Dr. McKinney.
Here.
Mr. Parker.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
Ms. Fulton.
Here.
Ms. Ballou.
Here.
Did I pronounce that correct?
It's Bollier.
Ms. Ogara.
Here.
Ms. Consella.
Here.
Mr. Falsarano.
Present.
Mr. Mahoney.
Here.
Ms. Scolera.
Here.
Ms. Hines.
Here.
Ms. O'Connell.
Here.
And I think I got everyone. Is there anyone that I missed? I think that's everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. So we only have one item on the list tonight, and that is the hybrid schedules. I had asked District Administration to provide to the Board of Education and to families out there in the public kind of a refresher and a bit of an informational, educational presentation is probably too strong of a word regarding the hybrid and remote schedules and what changes both families who choose hybrid and families who choose remote ought to expect in the new year, both on which they chose and changes that were going to happen when we initiate the hybrid plan for remote families as well. Because it's something that I wasn't clear on, and I was getting a lot of calls and emails about. So I figured instead of having them just tell me, we'll tell everybody all at once, and then hopefully we'll all be on the same page. So thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. I know it's tough in the holidays to have to give up, yeah, another night, but I thought it was really important for our families. So, Dr. Mosley, I got in my email today a packet from you regarding a lot of that information. Did you have something prepared? Want to just take it away? Oh, you're on mute, Dr. Mosley.
I do. I'm ready to go.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
What I'm gonna do, just for format pieces, we're gonna go through each level, and we'll start with elementary, take questions. We'll start with the middle school, we'll take questions. We'll start with the high school, we'll take questions, and then that will conclude it. So I just want to talk briefly about some good afternoon, or I'm sorry, good evening, everyone. And certainly, I just wanted to say that I know Hanukkah is coming up for our families, and happy Hanukkah for those families that are coming up, and also to the holidays as well. So how about, Ms. Consella, can you just, as we discussed today, just kind of share the screen a little bit? We'll just jump right in, please, please. This is just informational, and partly what I'm going to do is just kind of outline some things, things that have changed and things that have stayed the same. All right. So go ahead, Ms. Consella. All right. So what we did is that we just put out to all of this. You don't have to write it down. Once we're done tonight, we'll post it on our website. All of these are what we call significant dates to keep in mind as we start to draw to a conclusion for this year and into a new year, 2021. I want to just emphasize this, and I'll say it, I'll say it to say it, but it sounds like I'm a broken racket. All of these dates, all of them were contingent upon staffing and the spread of the virus. All right? Go ahead, Ms. Consella, thank you. So this is, you think we can go up a little bit more, Ms. Consella? Perfect, perfect. So a couple of things. One of the things that, on October 12th, when we first presented this information to the Board, you could see that Nashville was in substantial, and nothing has changed in terms of the identification of substantial. What has changed, and Bobby Bagley has talked about this numerous times, both in the public arena, also on the website too, is the number of cases per 100,000, which has grown, you know, compared to 10, 12 until now, it is up significantly. So we have to understand that this all factors in, these, these conditions, the number of cases, number of hospitalization, and where we're at in terms of a community for, community level of transition, in terms of how we go back and the, the process and the format in which we do this. So this is FYI. All of this is on the website, COVID-19 Dashboard that the state provides, all of the districts. And again, this is on our website as well. This information will be on our website as well. Go ahead, Ms. Consella. All right. Again, just some things, as the Board, as we start to think about some things, one of the things that we talked about is the level of staffing and how that factors in as well. The last time that we presented this, and I'm not gonna get too much into the weeds, but if you could just do a quick snapshot, I can't see the top date there, Ms. Consella, I'm sorry, of the first, I have it right here. I'm sorry, I can just follow along. I have it right here. Sorry, Tara. On October 26th, if just moving all the way over to the Delta, where you see 61 total right there, that's where we were on October 6th, October 25th, I'm sorry, October 26th. And then if you quickly move down to where we're at as of today, in terms of the Delta, that's 77 faculty. So that number continues to increase in terms of staff who are, you know, making requests for FMLA, EFMLA, and ADA. And I just want to take a pause for a second, because this is very important. These are staff members or staff who have made these requests under these categories. In a typical year, we have staff members who also are taking care of loved ones who get sick, who are fighting cancer, who are not identified on this, on this chart too, but also factors into our staff availability. We also have faculty members too, who are taking care of individuals in their cells too, in terms of COVID-19. And I say this, you know, we've, as teachers, as administrators, we, we are trained to come in when you're a little sick. You got the sniffles, you come in. You get off feeling well, take an Advil, take some glass of water, drink a glass of water and come in. And what we're doing now, what we told the staff is that you cannot come in sick. Do not do that. If you're not, if you're not feeling well, please, please stay home. So all of those numbers aren't captured here, but I just wanted to give the community and the Board a sense that these numbers are always moving and fluctuating. All right, Ms. Consella, thank you. All right. Terminology, I'm not gonna define all of them, but I honor asynchronous learning, synchronous learning, office hours, PLCs, early release. What does that all mean? So one of the things we did is to provide a snapshot, a snapshot of some general working terms on what these terms look like and what they feel like in a classroom. And as we start to think about asynchronous learning, synchronized learning, all of that can get lost in translation. What we wanted to do is give a clear definition of what, how we define it, our expectations and the, and the community's expectations on what that feels and looks like. And later on in the presentation, you're gonna hear more about what that looks like and some of the challenges, and also some of the benefits of that as well. All right. So now we get to, okay, all right. I just wanna stop. What we're gonna do is that I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. McKinney. I know that there are some, some principals here, elementary school principals, excuse me, who are here too, to give the commentary. What we're gonna do is that we're gonna talk about the hybrid schedules. And before we jump right into this, just so that we all have a working definition of what hybrid feels like and looks like in the vocabulary. Hybrid means a little bit of in-person and a little bit of remote. It's not perfect, and you're gonna see a lot of that tonight and hear it. And so when we talk about hybrid, it's a combination of remote learning and in-person. Now with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. McKinney, and I'm sure some of the principals are gonna jump in, elementary principals will jump in, and then we'll have a, and then we'll open up for questions for the Board, and then we'll jump into the middle school. Dr. McKinney, are you there? I can't see you because we're in the, like, call it the horizontal pieces, but I'm assuming you're there. So I'll turn it over to you, and thank you.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Mosley, and good evening, everyone. Joining us tonight, we have three elementary principals, and we have two kindergarten teachers here as well to answer some questions from the Board. Ms. Consella, do you mind moving to the next page for us? So this first page speaks to what elementary remote schedules look like, both in our early schools and our late schools. We tried to put it all on one page. I think we're all familiar with remote learning now. Kids are, teachers are online, getting their instruction, and activities are delivered both electronically through Zoom, but also some of the subscriptions and other platforms that we have. You can see that the day includes some morning meetings, some lunacy time, other content areas, but they do run on an early release schedule, which allows for the office hours, individual student attention, small groups. These things happen all the time in a regular classroom. It just looks a little different in a remote setting. And then time to meet the contractual obligations for teachers, so they have their planning and prep time, as well as time for district, school, and department meetings. And we do have some teachers who are engaging in professional learning, trying to continually improve their practice in the midst of teaching during a challenging time. So that's our first page there for remote. Ms. Consella, if you go to the next page as well, we tried to do the same thing for hybrid, putting it all on one page, which is a mix of face-to-face instruction in the school, as well as online learning to create a well-rounded learning experience. So again, we have an early school schedule and a late school schedule. And we also tried to add some pieces here for parents and families. We run on a AABB schedule, so if you were coming in person on Monday and Tuesday, you could see what your schedule might look like in the building, traditionally coming into the school. Then on Wednesday and Thursday, we tried to break it out, so it gives parents and kids and teachers a better understanding what it looks like if you're working remotely or distance from home, what kind of activities they'd be involved in. And then Friday is our remote day as well for cleaning in the building and other things, so we tried to outline that as well. Again, in this schedule, like in the other two, it's following an early release schedule, two hours earlier to provide time for office hours, which gives us time to do individual assessments and small group instruction, as well as time at the end for planning and prep, which meets the contractual obligations for teachers. So those are the two schedules for elementary, remote, and hybrid. Dr. Mosley, did you want to pause here, or would you like to continue with the presentation? We're happy to answer any questions.
Dr. McKinney, I think some of the questions that have come up is that if we, if some of the kids, if a parent chooses hybrid, will they be able to stick with their same remote teacher?
Ideally, yes, but it's not guaranteed. We're trying to match our staffing to our student and parent needs as best we can. Our teachers are amazing. We have many who don't want to give up their kids to another teacher, so they're willing to work things out, but it is a challenge. So I, I could not say that it would be guaranteed.
Thank you. All right. I'm just gonna start right there, and I'll open it up to the Board for questions around the hybrid schedule for the elementary school, or the remote schedule for the elementary school as well.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. I cannot see everybody when we have screen. Oh, there we go. So now I can. So I'm just gonna do, should I scan for hands, or should I go around using my list? Does anyone have a? Go ahead, Ms. Giulio.
I think scanning for hands will work better, because not all of us have questions. I know I don't so far.
Great. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. So I guess I wanna kind of go, I know we're into the hybrid, but I wanna kind of go back to the beginning if I can, because we didn't take any questions on that with the number of cases and hospitalizations. I'm just kind of looking at my notes that I took here, because I guess my, and this has been my concern all along. I know Salem, Mass. has opened, I got their opening schedule here, their fall schedule. I've spoken to other people in other communities in Massachusetts, when they've had any type of a case, somebody's been tested positive, they went in, they closed down for as long as they did, and they went, opened up, and went right back to the full schedule in school. I, to this day, still can't understand this, why we only had two options, not the three options, and I'm listening to this with the hybrid, that I guess they're going to AABB, and I'm looking at the schedule right here. So the AA and the BB, explain that AA and BB. I'm kind of confused with the AA and the BB. So is the AA gonna be, that's gonna be Monday, Tuesday, and BB is gonna be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, right? Basically?
Yes, if you look at the schedule, they're labeled, it says in-person, Monday, Tuesday.
Okay. Now, with that, how many hours a day are they gonna be in the classroom? In the hybrid?
As it states in the document that you received in the packet, it's two hours less than the regular school day. That two hours allows for office hours for teachers and the contractual planning time for students.
Okay.
I mean, teachers, sorry.
I didn't see this when it came to me, because I worked all day long. So this is the first time I'm seeing this one that came in our packet today, not anything back. So how many hours is in the, is it four hours in the classroom? The day is what, six and three-quarter hours that teachers have to be in the school? Is that, is that what the contract says?
I don't have the contract in front of me. In fact, I do believe the Board has gotten an update on instructional minutes and hours, and how we're going to meet the state expectations.
I'll just interject here a little bit. The purpose of this meeting is to focus on the hybrid schedule. We don't have the contracts in front of us. We'd be happy to have a conversation around the contracts.
Okay, let's take the contract out. I'll just go in and say, how many hours, because the parent's gonna wanna know. Let's get this clear. How many hours in the classroom are we talking on the hybrid?
So I'll, I'll jump in there. I'm trying to read the, the schedule, and it looks like it would be from either 8:00 to 12:45, or 9:00 to 1:25. Am I reading that correctly, Dr. McKinney?
Yes, thank you, Madam President.
Why, if I ask that question, can I get an answer? That the President of the Board is giving it to me rather than anybody else? I'm asking so the parents can understand, because they don't see this. How many hours are in the classroom? Two and a, is the answer two and a half hours in the classroom? Three and a half hours in the classroom during the hybrid? Four and a half hours in the classroom?
Eight?
Per day, per day.
Looking at the document, the students are in-person, the school day runs from 8:15 to 12:45 in an early school, and 8:45 to 1:25 at a late school.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney, and I think that's helpful, especially at this age, when we're looking at students who need probably childcare before or after school. So it's helpful for parents to know what times they ought to be looking at if they decide to choose hybrid versus remote. Did anyone else have a question about the elementary schedules? Ms. Bishop?
Just a quick one. When will families know if they're gonna be in Cohort A or B?
So unless, you know, there are changes in parent preference for their kids, some of the cohorts may stay the same for kindergarten and first grade, but also the numbers may change. So at the conclusion and getting the results back from the kind of poll or survey that went out to parents, principals will be working, you know, the rest of this month into January to determine schedules and reach out to them with enough notice so that parents can make their schedules, transportation arrangements, daycare, all of that. So I would say by the beginning of January.
Okay. And is there any flexibility? And I'm sure there's not a lot of flexibility. I'm sure it's up to the principals within the elementary schools, right?
I see Mr. Mahoney has come off mute. Mr. Mahoney, would you like to chime in, sir?
Flexibility in terms of the cohort that the students assign?
Yeah.
What, what we've done in planning that, and I know that it was a lot of work initially in, with this new survey, it could undo the work that was done already, but we worked hard to line up siblings. That was the first thing we wanted to do. If you have a fifth grader and a first grader, you don't want parents running all over the place. The other thing was, we tried to cluster a lot of our ELL groups, so that they were coming in on the same days as well, so they could get some in-person services with the ELL teacher as well. So you kind of had, one cohort was heavy there with siblings, and one cohort was heavy in another area, just to make the services a little bit better, and they could meet with, with every, you know, service provider that we had. Parents could change their option, obviously. What, I know what I'm doing is I want to target the K-1 first, because they would ideally be coming back sooner. Up until that point, I'd like to give parents like a two-week notice at least as to which days they need to plan for, and hopefully we can still do that.
That's fantastic, and that, that reasoning sounds, sounds sound, and I hope it makes sense to people when, when they're given their, their cohort, that they understand that it was done with thought. You guys have put a lot of work into this. Thank you for answering my question.
I see Ms. Fulton and Ms. Bollier.
I just wanted to add that we also had looked at people who had babysitting, you know, services where they might have three or four children that they have in one area, so that it would be easier transporting back and forth. That would also help the busting situation, because that's a big concern of ours, as getting everybody on the bus at the same time. So, and we are very open to helping parents change that. If something comes up at work, or they moved, we're always willing to change it.
Fantastic. Thank you. I was just gonna say, we also have heard from parents ahead of time regarding certain days, and if they've let us know upfront, we're able to accommodate. After we send out our lists, our classrooms are gonna be pretty tight, and we're not able to flip-flop cohorts. So it is something that a lot of parents have already let us know.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you so much.
Okay. I don't see any other hands. So thank you, everybody, for answering those specific questions regarding elementary school. Just to make sure that I understand, currently at the elementary school, there are teachers who have remote classes and teachers who have hybrid classes. Are there any teachers who have a mix of remote and hybrid students together? Please, go ahead, Ms. Fulton.
At this time, I do have a few, only because of the numbers. And knowing that we were gonna start out remote, we did the best we could, but I know I have a few classes where I have scattered some remote kiddos in it, just to make the class sizes equitable. So those are my concerns, and of course, we, I notified parents to say, you know, if we go, if we have to switch this, your teacher may change. So I believe they're aware, but it's like the last resort I want to do, because they bonded with their teachers, and that it's just, it's gonna be tough.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I'm sure parents have appreciated hearing directly from you in those cases as well. Okay. So secondary, oh, go ahead, Dr. Mosley.
Just want to be, before we move on to secondary, are there any other questions around elementary? All right. I'll, I'll say it after every, I'm just, I want the public and the Board to just be completely aware of what's happening here in hybrid. All of this can change with one teacher getting sick. All of this can change with, with an outbreak, I'll pick on Sherry at Dr. Chris. It can go either way. So there's no guarantees when it comes to hybrid, where it, it's all contingent on the virus when people get sick, and sometimes when people get sick, it doesn't necessarily mean that it was transmitted in school. It can be transmitted outside of school. So when selecting hybrid, and we'll get to this later, please understand, parents and community members, we have to be flexible and understanding. That's all. All right. Mr. Falsarano, we up for the middle school? All right. Ms. Consella? By the way, Tara, you were supposed to remind me about the poll at the beginning of this. So we have to jump back later on that. Is that fair enough, Tara? I can't see you, so. That? You were supposed to remind me, remember? All right. Must be my old age. Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Falsarano, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First, let me thank all the secondary principals and assistant principals that have been working on this. A little shout-out to Kelly Holmes from Elm, who kind of put this into the grid that we stole from Nate Burns. So again, thank you for Nate for making the grid, but we, like everybody else, will be in an early release schedule. We are, you'll notice that our day now starts at 9:00 in remote. We have 8:00 to 9:00 office hours. 9:00 starts classes. So we're gonna shift that up, start the day at 8:00 with a homeroom, move into four periods a day. At the end of the day, there's going to be, the end of the building day, there will be a built-in homeroom, and lunch will be served in the building, as opposed to a grab-and-go or anything like that. Students will have, we're approximating a half hour, 45 minutes to travel home, those people who are in the building, and we'll start, start office hours 1:15 to 2:43 to close out the remainder of the day. We too have cohorts, Cohort A and Cohort B. We have to split our week, where we are going periods one through four on Monday and Wednesday, and periods five through seven in an advisory-type class, Tuesdays and Thursdays. So Mondays and Tuesdays, Cohort A will come in, Cohort B, and the remote students will be home. Flip-flop that for the cohorts on. will be home, flip-flop that for the cohorts on Wednesday and Thursday. So B will be in the building. Again, A will be home and the remote students will be home. We are focused right now on having as much synchronous learning as possible when we're in session. So that would mean a live stream. Those students who are in class are going to be obviously getting a lecture and work and with the teacher in person. And those who are home, so that's cohort B, I'm sorry, the secondary cohort, whomever that is that, that day, and the at-home remote students will all be live streaming that class at the same time.
Thank you, Mr. Fazirano. I appreciate all the work that has gone into this. And also, thank you to Ms. Holmes. Dr. Mosley? Oh, you're on mute, Dr. Mosley.
I can't see everyone, so I apologize for that. So at this point, we'll open up for questions just on middle school. Thank you, Tara. If you have any questions on the hybrid schedule for the middle school.
I'm looking for hands. Go ahead, Ms. Gilio.
I'm, I'm just wondering when the, the day, the beginning of the daytime will change from nine o'clock to eight o'clock? Is that January nineteenth?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And to be clear, on January nineteenth, that would be for all middle school students, both remote and hybrid students would have to start at eight AM?
Correct.
Okay. What happens if something happens and we have to back it out? So we're in hybrid and we have to go remote for some period of time because of staffing or, you know, possible exposure or, you know, any of the other dozens of reasons why schools have had to go remote for a certain time? Will that, will we simply remain at that eight o'clock for the remainder of the year or will it go back and forth?
I think that's something we can look at in the moment. It's because it's just a simple, I don't want to say everything is just simple, but it is just a simple shift in a way, just letting the families know that the day will start. Because really, nothing changes in the progression of the day. As it is now in full remote, Mondays and Wednesdays are periods one through four, Tuesdays and Thursdays. So that doesn't change. Shifting by an hour is a matter of a blackboard phone call. The day will start at this time today and will follow a certain day. We'll label the days so that families know, okay, this is the day that we're, we're running today. It's a period one through four, period five through seven in the advisory. So I think those are things that we can look at and, and shift on the fly if we need to, because again, just the time change is simple. Doesn't change anything else in the matter in which the instruction is being delivered.
And I, you know, the, it's been my experience, the board is curious about how the day runs. But we don't typically have a lot of, a lot to offer when it comes to, you know, what classes are offered when, et cetera. We don't typically get involved in that. But start time and end time is typically a board matter. And also, as a parent of an almost teenager, I can tell you that what time everyone has to get up is a critical issue in some households every day. And so an hour isn't a lot. It's going to be a lot more, I think, for the high school. We'll talk about that when we get there. But that is something that I think families would like to know before we get to the nineteenth. The other question that I had was regarding synchronous learning because we've never really, we've never really explored what that will look like for our district. So my question is regarding the, the students and families who have chosen remote. Currently, there's a lot of interaction between students and their teachers during the classroom period on Zoom. Or there has the potential for that. What will that look like during a live stream?
Honestly, and I'm going to have to say, I don't know exactly what that's going to look like. We're, we're going to have to, we're going to have to work on that, to be quite honest with you, because right now it is, everything is through Zoom. And to now then have students in the classroom, students on Zoom, we don't know what that feels like. We don't know how to manipulate the classroom in that manner because it's simple. Not simple, but for the teachers, they're looking into the camera on their computer, just as in return, the students are looking back in their camera. So now to balance out working with students in the classroom and working with students online at the same time, I, I don't have a feeling for that. And neither do the teachers right now.
Okay. And my last question, kind of on that same theme, is regarding the other platforms that teachers might be using. I know that there are some teachers who prefer Google Meet as opposed to Zoom for a variety of their reasons and personal preferences. Does Google Meet allow for a live stream as well?
Yes. I'm going to say yes. It, it, they're all in real time. It's a camera on, I'm talking into the camera. Is there a delay? If there is, I'm not quite sure, but I don't think it's anything more than a few seconds. It's the same concept.
All right. Thank you for explaining that to me in a way that doesn't make me sound too much like an idiot and as a non-technical person because I am not. It's like all magic. So, thank you. I appreciate that. Dr. McKinney?
Thank you, Madam President. We have two teachers here. I'm wondering if you might be interested in hearing from them around the synchronous piece and how it's worked in hybrid and how it might look in, you know, a more synchronous way. So we have Erin O'Connell, who's a kindergarten teacher at New Searls, and this Heather Scolera, who's a teacher at Dr. Crisp.
Thank you. Thank you very much, both of you, for coming. And yes, we love hearing from teachers.
I guess I can chime in first if that's okay. So just to introduce myself, my name is Erin O'Connell. I'm a kindergarten teacher at New Searls Elementary. And I just kind of came in tonight just for the opportunity to chat with you guys. I'm a teacher that began remote. I transitioned to hybrid. I'll be transitioning back to hybrid on January nineteenth. I just wanted to share some of my own experiences and, you know, my own points of view specifically about the hybrid model. And mostly because I think there are some ins and outs that maybe some might not realize. And I'm in no way speaking on behalf of anyone else other than just me and what's worked for me and what I've experienced with my kids. So first, after being hands-on specifically in the hybrid model we have in place, I can just kind of let you know what a day looks like for, or a week looks like for us. And that day we started hybrid was the best day. I mean, I loved being in school. The kids loved being in school. In kindergarten, it was some of their first experiences in school. So when my kids are at home on remote days, it's a mixture of Zoom calls and independent work. And it's meant to mimic a school day schedule. Their Zooms are with my kindergarten team teacher, who I'm very thankful to have, some amazing paraeducators and other support staff. And it's designed to help them give the interaction and support that they would get if they were in school. And right now at one twenty-five, which is the early release scheduled time, the children are dismissed and that's when I can meet with small groups. And I can have one-on-one check-ins with my kids who have been at home all day with not as much interaction or direct instruction from a teacher, however, they are getting some. It's not, it's not perfect, but you know, we have to make do with what we have. And I need this time. I need that time at the end of the day to check in with them and to connect with them, and they need it too. I enjoy popping on and checking in with them when I can't see them in person that day. The afternoon time is definitely well-spent and our Fridays is kind of the same thing. It's a mixture of Zoom meetings to start, small groups, one-on-one stuff. And just with this being said, I just, I don't know if this is the exact place, but the idea of synchronous learning being talked about is a little bit nerve-wracking for kindergarten, so. Because just that there's technology to have the kids streamed in, it's, it's a little concerning, but. The hybrid model is working for us and it is working for me. And it's not perfect, but I do feel like with the mixture that I have been able to be successful doing the three things that I think most teachers want to do is you want to make connections, you want to engage the kids, and you want to educate them. And if I can see them in person two days and then, you know, for short snippets throughout the week when they're at home, I think that I've been able to do that. Does the hybrid model look the same in every school? Definitely not. And I realize that it doesn't work the way it might work at my school for other schools. I'm just one person, just one mind and one opinion, trying to, you know, make it through and do the best I can for the kids. So in general, it's had its challenges this year and definitely required a mindset change, but it's a team effort for sure. And I just wanted to convey that it is hard work every day. It takes deep thought and careful planning, but I know there's a, a lot of time and effort going into considering all grade levels and populations and schools and admins are working hard. But I just felt like I needed some time to just kind of let you know that it has been working and I feel like it does have its benefits. And the current hybrid model for us is, is definitely something that I think should be not always looked at in such a harsh light and just to really, you know, embrace the time that I have to spend with my kids and to embrace those small little one-on-one times that I can have in the afternoon and on the days that are at home. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Scolera. I'm sorry, Ms. O'Connell, not Ms. Scolera.
I'll echo a lot of what Erin just said. I'm Heather. I teach kindergarten at Dr. Crisp. I am assigned currently to a hybrid class. My grade level has two hybrid classes and one fully remote class. So we don't know who or how we might be teaching in the weeks to come as some families may change their choices. So I can only speak to what we have been doing and what it looks like in my class currently when we were in the hybrid model. And like Erin said, I'm going to give a gigantic disclaimer at the beginning. Please envision big neon lights and flashing arrows at my head. The huge disclaimer that I am one teacher in one classroom, in one school, in a large district. So even though we are a team and we all work under the same umbrella of standards and expectations, building principals then need to take those standards and expectations and tailor them to what's right for their building. And then at the grade level and even individual teachers, we then take that and we tailor those overarching expectations down to what's right for the students that are in front of me right now. And especially this year, that then also expands out to the families that those students are representing. So there is, like Erin said, a lot of, there is a bit of give and take. And my classroom is not going to look exactly like Erin's classroom, even though we both teach the same grade. We're in different parts of town with different families and students and they're all amazing. But I need to do what's best for my kids and it might look different than what Erin does for her students because their needs might be different. It seems like a little bit of a rewind because we were talking about secondary and Erin and I are at the, the ground level. We're building the foundation for those kiddos to get up to secondary, but personally, I don't necessarily feel that a synchronous hybrid situation for five turning six-year-olds would be beneficial for them. So we are working under an asynchronous model. So as I am teaching my, let's say, A cohort on Monday and Tuesday, my B students are at home asynchronously moving through online lessons that I've prepared, videos I have left for them, some pre-recorded myself, some songs, read aloud stories that I've gathered. And that's all built, we in the primary levels are using Seesaw, which has been amazing because my children, they're not yet readers. They're getting there and they're excited. But with Seesaw, I can leave them voice instructions. I can leave them video instructions. So they are able to move through their day with learning opportunities. And I, I happen to also build into that Seesaw schedule for the day Google Slideshows that have those videos and read alouts and pre-recorded things in there. I'm also the parent of a high school student. I am very much in favor of synchronous learning for her. I don't think I would be in favor of teaching that way, my five-year-olds and six-year-olds. I think it's different. So this is a little bit of a rewind going back to that, but I'll echo what Erin said. Those last two hours of contracted time that we have when we dismiss our in-person children is critical to me. That's when we are preparing our room for sanitizing at night. That means we need to stow all of our papers and cover our bookshelves so nothing gets ruined by the mist. And our absolutely rock star custodial team has been amazing. But we do some prep for that so that it's ready for them to do their part of it. Then I personally and my teammate, that's also hybrid, we Zoom our home kids at a set time in the afternoon. And that's a check-in. That's, I ask them about the assignments they were doing that day. I ask them about the stories they listen to. And if something doesn't seem to quite be clicking, I'm grabbing the teaching materials that are around me and I'm reinforcing or re-teaching that certain concept. And sometimes I'm just saying, oh, you got a haircut. It looks so handsome. You're looking good today. You know, I get to put eyes on each of my children every day. And to me, that's important. And so those last two hours of contracted time, I'm not only doing that, but then I'm preparing for the in-person teaching for the next day, which is all the things you can imagine, the photocopies, the gathering materials for projects, hands-on, these are kindergartners, that's best done in person. And then I'm building those asynchronous at-home learning days. I'm building those through Google Slides. I'm building those through Seesaw. And so that's what that time is going into. My teammate and I, we're also consulting with all the interventionists, with ELL, with special ed, with our administrators, with social work, with guidance for any student concerns that have come up through the day. That's when we're taking care of all of our students, not just the cohort that's in front of us. So to me, that's what makes that important because my priority is providing five days of education for my students. And I feel like if I didn't have those two hours of contracted time, and let's be honest, between, between you, me and everyone, it's way more than two hours, like that, those things are more than two hours. But let's say the two hours of contracted time. That's critical. I, I feel like I would be doing a disservice to my at-home kids if I didn't have that early release schedule. And we haven't cut any, you can see in the schedule, we haven't cut anything out. We've condensed. And frankly, my five and six-year-olds are sitting either at their table or on their little taped-out personal play area that's next to them for four and a half hours. So we're in that classroom together for four of those four and a half hours. So they, I think they're getting a lot. Is it the six hours I wish it was? No, but I'm also confident that this will not be forever and we'll get through it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry, Dr. Mosley. I just had an excited utterance there. I, I really sincerely appreciate that insight into what the day looks like. And I appreciate that you didn't let us keep going without backing up and, and sharing that with us because I think a lot of families, I, I, I just think it's really important for us all to hear all of the work that goes in and also to understand the fundamental differences in the way that the district is handling elementary school and asynchronous and how that works there versus the idea of secondary and synchronous as a product of the developmental stage of, of our, of our kids. And I'm, I'm, I, I'm excited by what I heard. So thank you so much. Dr. Mosley, did you have something to say? And then I don't remember if somebody else had a hand.
I just want to, thank you. I, I'm, I'm not, we, again, I appreciate the conversation on asynchronous and synchronous learning. I think that there's, there aren't any high school teachers here. There's no middle school teachers here. We weren't prepared to give that, that discussion today. So I think it's a warranted one because then it gives you a flavor of what that feels like in different environments. To Mr. Faziano's point, you know, we, we have not started or explored that asynchronous or synchronous learning at the middle school yet. And so that might feel and look differently, but certainly I think it's a warrant discussion for all three levels to have that. But I, I just want to kind of get us back to the agenda on the hybrid, the hybrid schedules, all three levels. And if there's any questions for the middle school level, for the administrators, and please.
I don't, I can't tell who's new, but now I have a second page.
I see Ms. Bishop.
Okay. So, thank you. I apologize. So someone just joined and now I have a second page and so. And so I'm missing someone. So if I miss you, shout out, please. Go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
So I just had, I had two quick questions going back to the middle school piece. And both of them are from my eighth grader who was like, what? For the beginning of the new period that's coming in at the eight o'clock piece, is that assigned to teacher? Does she have to be awake and ready to go for like a separate class? Or is that something that she's going to be requested to do or opt into? She wants to know what time she needs to wake up.
Depends on if she's coming to school that day or not. No, the eight o'clock class, the eight o'clock class is not a new class. Eight o'clock class is a shift up everything that we're at now. So we start our day at nine now with a period one or period five, depending on the day. Because of busing, the way that transportation looks, we're assuming that we're going to go back in real time to our normal timeframes, which middle school starts the first period at 8:05. We would do a homeroom from eight to 8:05. So it's not a new class. So they would have to go, yes, Ms. Bishop, because it's period one or period five, depending on the day. But it's just because it's a shift up because we're going back in person. So students would be taking the transportation to school that day. And if we're going to stay synchronous and we're going to educate the kids in front of us and at home at the same time, we have to have everything synced up.
That makes sense. And then, oh, she's going to be so upset to wake up that early. The other question is in regards to lunch. Are the middle schoolers having lunch in class? Which I think is what they thought was going to happen.
That's the plan as of now. Yes, the cafeteria would not be used if you're having lunch in class. And I think it's going to look different from each school, how the food is going to get to the classes. But at all the schools, lunch will, from my understanding, at all the schools, lunch is being held in the classrooms.
Okay, fantastic. Those are my only two questions. And I have a 14-year-old who's very happy to hear the answers of them. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions before we go to the high school, for middle school questions?
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Thank you, Mr. Palzirano and also Dr. Mosley. So I guess I'm going to go back to the question about face-to-face time and checking in time. On the middle school, once everyone goes to hybrid and they start at eight and the remote students are kind of watching the live streams and we're still figuring that piece out. The office hours are 1:15 to 2:43. So that's an hour and a half. I guess my question is, unlike the elementary schools where there's typically one teacher or maybe a teacher and a specialist during the day, the middle school students are going to have four separate classes and potentially four separate teachers each day. So how, so I guess the question is, should the remote students and families be expecting that from 1:15 to 2:43, their student will be having breakout groups and Zooms? As opposed to currently where when the last class ends at like 1:30, they have like homework or office hours by appointment, but it's not for everybody?
Well, no, because if we go to that where we're live streaming, everybody who's supposed to be in period, we'll take a Monday, everybody who's supposed to be in period one, because their schedule naturally assigned them to period one, should be in period one, taking the lesson and working on the assignment that goes along for that particular period, transition to two, three and four. The office hours, however, are in discussions, they've been seemed to be geared more towards those students who are at home during the day who don't have that immediacy of the access to the teacher that they're in front of them. Yes, there will be some immediacy because if the teacher's at the computer at the time and a hand is raised, they can answer the student in front of them. But obviously, the students that are in person are going to have that much more access because they're right there to the teacher. So if something does get missed, question comes up that can't be answered during that particular period, the students at home will be using, who are at home that day will be using the office hours. That's not to say that the students who were in the building that day can also access the office hours. But we're predicting out, because that's what we can only, we can do right now, is that those office hours will be heavily used by the students that are home that day. Simply because, as I said, if they just, the teacher's not at the computer at the time when the student has a question and the period happens to end, it's not, it's unreasonable to say, or that's inequitable because they won't see that teacher again till Wednesday. So they're going to use the office hours hopefully to just say, hey, I had a question at the end of class. I know you couldn't get to me. Here's my question.
Thank you, Mr. Palzirano.
Sure.
So I guess I'm still left unsure if that means that remote parents of middle schoolers ought to expect that their student will need to be available for those office hours on a daily basis in a way that they haven't had to necessarily be there every, available every single day thus far?
No, they shouldn't. There's nothing that's happening in office hours in this schedule, the hybrid schedule, that isn't happening now. And maybe I'm still not answering your question. I apologize. Maybe it's just not computing right now. Those office hours are going to be used the same way that they are used right now. So there is no higher expectation for remote kids to be doing something different in those office hours.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And so I'm just trying to cover the basis of the emails and phone calls that I've been getting and taking notes and making sure that I don't leave anything out during this chance when I have everybody stuck in Zoom with me. So thank you for that. And if I do, I apologize to those parents and suggest that they email their principal. Dr. Mosley, I don't see any other hands. So moving on to high school?
Yes.
Okay.
Burns. I'm sorry, Tara, would you mind showing that? Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So give Tara a minute just to get the schedules up and then I'll kind of go through the comparison between the two. So as you know, currently, we've been in a remote setting, took advantage of, you know, the later start for our students to provide them a little bit of extra time to sleep in the morning based on the research. We're starting at 9:00 AM. All of our students are going through all four of their classes during the day. They do, and they're meeting with their teachers during that time. We do have a lunch built in. And then at the beginning and end of day, we do have office hours and asynchronous learning taking place. And that provides students an opportunity to either meet with their teachers, work in small groups, get some extra help, make up some schoolwork and things of that nature. And then we also have Friday set up for that same type of plan, providing our teachers with some PLC time as well, which is really needed in this timeframe so that they can learn from one another, find out best practices, learn new applications that might be useful in the classroom. And you know, every, every teacher that I've spoken with has been really appreciative of having that time. And I think it's, you know, something that's really important to maintain in this current situation. Everybody this year is kind of a new teacher throughout the year. If you could go, Tara, to the next change, so when we moved to the hybrid schedule. So we're looking to do this on January 27th. So we didn't want to do anything to disrupt our students at the beginning of the, or at the end of the semester. So semester one's coming to a close. And with the two weeks after the holiday break, we figured, you know, coming back for only a handful of days would really be tricky for kids as they're trying to wrap up the end of the semester and earn their credits. So we wanted to start this during semester two. We're still going to utilize that Monday through Thursday schedule. Our students are going to be in their classes, blocks one through four. But due to transportation, as being one of the biggest roadblocks, we have to start our school day utilized or follow our typical early release schedule. So the school day would start at 7:20 versus the nine o'clock schedule that we're currently following. We built in a grab and go lunch at the end of the school day. So students will not be eating within the building. We'll have lunches set up at the end of the halls or at the exits and students will grab the lunch and leave the building during that time, much like what we do in our current early release situation. And then we have office hours after that. The teachers will have their duty-free lunch and they'll have that opportunity to meet with their students. The way that we're currently looking to set this up is much like middle school, we'd have a couple cohorts. So we'd have cohort A, which would be approximately 50% of the students that select hybrid. Cohort B would be the other 50% of the students that have selected hybrid. And then we'll have our remote-only students. Our schedules are already set based on, you know, student requests last year. And because of the nature of high school, we have a lot of singleton classes. So it wouldn't be possible for us to create remote-only classes and hybrid-only classes in the vast majority of our situations. A lot of, most of our, you know, say, extensions, Algebra I class, those don't necessarily line up during the same block. So it's not just an easy swap for us. And then we have, you know, only one teacher, for example, teaching AP Bio. So it wouldn't provide us that flexibility. So what we've decided to do is follow that synchronous learning plan, much like the middle schools. So on Monday and Tuesday, we'd have our first cohort of students coming into the building. And the teachers would be live streaming to cohort B and to our remote students. And then the opposite would occur on Wednesday and Thursday. So our cohort B students would be in person and cohort A and remote students would be at home learning through the live stream. One of the things to think about, you know, I know we talked about it earlier with the ADA, FMLA requests is in some situations, we might have teachers that are remote as well. Based on that request, they might be streaming into the classroom. So we would need to have either a substitute or hire another teacher to be in that classroom supervising the students. So that's one of the challenges that we might have. And we'll also need to have devices in the hands of our students. So they'd have to either bring in their own devices or utilize the devices that have been assigned to them through the Chromebooks that we've given out already this year. But basically, they would go through those different situations. So follow block one through four. Then they'd have their lunch and then head off on their own at the end of the school day. And then we'd utilize those office hours to help us. I think we try to specifically work with those students that are remote on a given day, but it would be open to anybody. But again, it would be difficult for a teacher in person to monitor both the students and work closely with the students in the classroom and those students that are home, getting instruction at the same time and monitoring the Zoom chat, the questions coming from those students, and then also being able to support kids within the classroom. So much like what Gabe said, you know, all those details haven't quite been worked out yet. Something that, you know, we're going to be working and looking to help our teachers and figure out what best practices are going to be for those students. I'll open it up to any questions that people might have.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. What about CTE?
So CTE would follow the same schedule. So we'd be looking to have our students coming in in person as well and following the schedule that we currently have. I know right now we have some CTE classes coming in only on Fridays. I think we would have that conversation to allow for that to continue if we needed to. But much like any of our other classes, we'd be running the same schedule for our students. They'd have to, it would be difficult to have a separate CTE-only schedule much, maybe basically because three out of the four student classes that those students would be taking would fall under this daily schedule.
Thank you. I appreciate that because that's a little bit of a switch from the fall regarding CTE. So Ms. Kinsella, I hate to ask you to take it down because I know people out there in the public like to see it on the screen instead of my face. But I can't see all of my participants while that is up. So I see that Mr. Guarino has a question. Go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a comment, actually. I just want the staff to know that I give your work a vote of confidence. From what I've been hearing on elementary and middle school and as well as high school, what Mr. Burns said about everybody being a new teacher is it really kind of resonates because you're doing things that are out of the ordinary. You're doing synchronous learning. You're doing Zoom. You're doing live streaming and you're doing in-person classes. So I just want to thank the staff because a lot of thought went into what your plans. And I really appreciate, you know, what you brought to the, what you're bringing to the district. And I just want you to know that I give your plan and your work a vote of confidence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Welcome to Mr. Norris and Mr. Gao. I'm glad you guys are able to join us for the high school portion. I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Ms. Oden to go ahead and give her questions. And then I want to make sure that the two of you have an opportunity to ask any questions that you might have as well. Ms. Oden?
Yes, thank you. I want to thank the principals, everybody that's been involved in this. This has been a challenge, to say the least. And I think you're doing the best you can to meet the needs of as many families as possible. And I think that's a real plus. I have a question about the streaming. Are we sure that all of the technology will be in place for that to happen?
I think we've been assured that, you know, the bandwidth has been increased. I think until we actually get in and do it, I think that's always the question. You know, we'll have laptops in teachers' hands by the end of the month. I think one of the concerns, like I alluded to earlier, is do our students have the devices that they need? We're going to have, you know, potentially, like I said earlier, teachers streaming in. We might have to have substitutes on a given day and the teacher might stream from home for that or during a quarantine. So students will need to have devices to utilize and work with. And we're utilizing Google Classroom as our platform. So even though we have students in class, those cohort of students that are home and those remote students are still going to need to access the materials, both in person and at home at the same time. So I think that's one of the other pieces that we're still kind of trying to figure out and work with to determine that we do have all those pieces in place. And we know some of our kids are only working on a desktop and they clearly can't bring a desktop into the building.
Right. Will administration let us know if there are any issues with making sure that all of our teachers and students will be able to stream?
Yeah, I think as we, as we get in and do it, I think one of the things we do is we want to try and practice and utilize some of that stuff ahead of time. You know, so Keith and I have talked a little bit about bringing in teachers prior to the end of the semester to give them the opportunities, maybe on Fridays to set up their classroom or also potentially to come in to practice during the month of January, streaming out so that we're there, they're comfortable with that technology. I think it's hard to flip a switch. I think Susan Rourke talked about it last week a little bit and her concern is, you know, you stop on January 26th with semester one and then semester two, we're in the building and we haven't tried anything. So we want to make sure that, you know, we're practicing the technology. We know what it might look like in person. And then those first few days are definitely going to be days where we're going slow to figure out, you know, how everything works with our students in person, students at home and our faculty members that are either streaming from the building or streaming into the building.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Thank you, Nate. I have one question. On the survey, we got some results today that we've had 4,145 responses. Is with 41% responding, yes, is that the number of parents that have responded? Or does that represent the number of students that have, that are in the survey? Because a parent could have three children and they would have to respond for all three. So can you kind of straighten that out for me?
Yeah, Stacy, I don't know if you want to talk to that.
Can I just jump in? Let me just jump in. We're gonna, we will talk about, when I, I had a commentary with Tara earlier. Originally, we were supposed to talk about the poll at the beginning, but we didn't have a chance to do that. So if, what I'd like to do is could finish the high school hybrid conversation, then we'll jump back to the, to the poll and then we'll take the question, Dottie, if that works. Because I think there is some question that that need to be clarified.
No problem whatsoever. Thank you, Nate. Thank you, Keith. Thank you, all the administrators, everybody here. This has been quite a challenge, as I said. And I think most people understand the work involved in this, how complex it is and how you all have been trying to meet the needs of all our students. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Oden. Ms. Dean, I see your hand. I thought I saw Mr. Parker's hand a minute ago. No, Mr. Parker's saying no. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Dean.
Mine is just a quick comment. When Mr. Burns was talking, he spoke about the gentleman who had a desktop and he couldn't bring it in. And I just want to, this week I contacted Mr. Apple United Way, wonderful man. And I just want to, this week I contacted Mr. Apple, United Way, wonderful man.
Alferberg.
Uh, thank you. And I didn't want to say it wrong because I certainly don't want to offend him because he is, he walks on water, that's how nice he is. But anyway, I said to him, on these computers that you have, are there pre-qualifications? Do you have to be in a certain income level or do you have to be in a certain need? Or, and he said, no, there are no pre-qualifications. Everybody is free to apply. And when you spoke of that incident, I, I wondered how many people are out there and aren't aware that that's available. I actually felt guilty. I was going to go and try to get one for my grandson. And I thought, in my mind, I thought, well, it would be nice if they went to the kids who couldn't otherwise have what they really need. So I wouldn't want to take from somebody, you hear what I'm saying? But I just, I just wonder if you've had any interaction. Are, are the kids taking advantage of that, I hope?
Yeah, we definitely do have some. Um, we send the students over to the United Way or, um, send requests over to the United Way all the time to either get, um, laptops or, uh, to get hotspots for our students. Uh, so we're doing a lot of work with them and we're really appreciative of everything that they're doing for our students. Um, and also staff members are getting, um, monitors as well. So they've done a, a lot for the educational community in Nashville this year and in the past.
It's nice to know that it's working. So thank you for sharing that.
And, and we'll put some, Stacy will put some information out. There, I believe they still have some resources available. So please, please, and it's no income or anything like that. Please contact the United Way and they do some, it's Mike, Mike Alferberg who's in charge of that. And thank you, Mike, for your work. And that was very helpful to just anyone. If you have, just have that conversation, they'll, they'll never say no. They certainly are willing to work with community members and families.
I, I just want to echo the big thank you to the United Way. Um, the amount of work they have done is just phenomenal. I feel like they're the glue that's holding our community together sometimes. Um, do you know Mr. Burns or do you, Ms. Dean, or do you, Dr. Mosley? Um, are they still asking, um, families to go through their local principal, um, in order to apply for the, uh, laptops or hotspots? Or are families able to go directly there?
Yeah, the last communication that I saw, um, they are requesting that it goes through the staff, staff at school. So I don't know that it necessarily has to be a principal or assistant principal. I think counselor or teacher, uh, would also be somebody that could help with, with that. Uh, but they are asking for the schools to be the, the point of contact.
I think Chuck, it was naturally the counselors just picked it up themselves, that responsibility. I don't want to put that on every other school, but, um, somebody at the school is doing that, just to reiterate what Mr. Burns is saying.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fosorano. I'm so excited to hear that, um, so many of our staff are aware of the program, um, are taking advantage of it. Um, and that our staff and our community partners are, are working to make sure our kids have, um, what they need, um, during this really difficult time. Just a reminder, the United Way also, um, partners with 68 Hours of Hunger to make sure our children have, um, food on the weekends and over school breaks as well. So those applications, I believe, go through the schools as well. So it's, I, I just, uh, times of emergency and crises like this just really remind me of how much our schools and our school staff do for the students and families of our community. I knew when I was a social worker and then going home to be just mom, I kind of forgot. And then this whole experience has been, um, very moving. It's been very moving to see, um, examples of all the things that everyone is doing for each other. So, um, thank you so much to everyone who's, who's giving of themselves. I appreciate it. Now, we've gotten kind of far afield. I had, uh, Ms. Dean, did you have any other questions?
No, I was just, I think Mr. Norris wants to speak.
Okay, yes, I.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Yes, I had intended to go to Mr. Norris and then Mr. Gao next. Go ahead, Mr. Norris.
Uh, thank you. So I just have one question tonight. So one of my largest concerns with eventually going to hybrid is the quality of education for the kids who don't choose hybrid, who still stay at home. Um, so I know we talked about increasing bandwidth and we increased bandwidth. We, uh, bought the technology to have, uh, cameras in the classrooms. But the kids who stay home, are they going to still have contact with the teacher? If they need to ask a question when the teacher's going over something on the board, are they going to be able to, uh, turn their mic on and ask something or chat something? Or is it going to be just a regular seminar where it's just like a, a camera in the back of the classroom and you just watch the camera and that's it?
Yeah, I think, uh, Stephen, that's an excellent question. And I think it might depend too on what's happening in the classroom and what's going on on a given day and what course you're talking about. So if it's a science class and they're doing a lab, I think that's going to be something where, you know, there might be some type of alternative assignment that's happening for, um, the student. Or we're talking about, uh, you know, a construction class and they're cutting wood and, you know, uh, banging nails and things like that. I think that's going to be pretty difficult to have any interaction with a, with a faculty member there too. But then, you know, if it's an English class and there's a discussion or a seminar going on or social studies class and you're having that discussion, I think that's an opportunity too where, you know, maybe the, um, maybe the live stream is up or the Zoom is up on the classroom wall and you've got speakers and that way there, people that are home can have that interaction as well. So I think, you know, it's tough to, tough to say exactly how that's going to work, but I think, you know, there's potential for, um, you know, in a variety of different ways. And I, you know, I wish I could guarantee that the teacher, the students that are home are going to have that same experience as the students in the classroom or even vice versa on, you know, in, in some situations where you have a, a teacher streaming from outside. I think, you know, that would end up pretty much just being remote instruction in person, you know? So if you have a teacher who's home or, or sick, um, and there's a substitute in the class monitoring the kids, I think, you know, it's much like what you're doing now where you'd have that teacher, um, remote streaming in and you're listening to the discussion and providing feedback in the chat or talking over your headphones, um, to the class. So I don't know if that, it doesn't really answer your question. I don't know if that's what you're looking for though.
It's just good, it's good as long as we, we have the technology to do it. So obviously it's going to be different in many different cases, but we have the technology to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Uh, Mr. Gao?
Thank you. Um, also thank you, Stephen, for asking that. I think that's a really pertinent question. And thank you, Mr. Burns, for that. Um, my question was about class sizes. So I understand that like the high schools in particular, we're going back at the half semester mark. So the classes can be, you know, rejuggled, whatever. But there's a lot of these full year classes. So I'm wondering for these full year classes, 30 people, what if everyone wants to go back to school? How will that social distancing of six feet still be, um, maintained?
Yeah, I think that's, uh, the concern that Mr. Richard and I have. You know, when we had SATs, um, earlier in the year, we found we could fit probably about 12 to 15 kids, uh, maximum in a classroom. So, um, it might be that we have to look to move classes to different locations than they're typically held in or, or switch a, a teacher's room. Um, we would be looking at, you know, 50% of the people in there. So it's about 15 would be the max, um, ideally. Uh, but sometimes we know the alpha doesn't necessarily break that way in certain classes either. So you might, um, there might be some times where we're going to have to just create a cohort. And Mr. Richard and I haven't quite decided on how we're going to do it. If it's going to be a straight alpha split, if we're going to alternate students. Um, I know, I think it was Ms. Raymond had talked earlier about how that cohort, how cohorts are going to be created. I think it's all going to depend on the number of students that request remote. Um, and then us kind of just going through and figuring out the best way to do it, um, based on that. And I think one of the pieces that we'll, we'll certainly consider would be, you know, daycare for younger students, uh, or younger children in the family, um, and things like that, if, if students do need to switch. But for the most part, we're going to try our best to kind of hold tight on whatever cohorts we're developing unless there's extenuating circumstances in the family.
That's awesome. And also just a quick follow-up. So will there be a case where there's, there's a lot of people signing up for hybrid that people will be like denied that opportunity and they'll have to unfortunately switch to remote learning because of the capacity issue?
Um, I think, you know, um, it's all going to depend on that data, but I don't, I don't believe if people are selecting hybrid, we're going to find a way to make it work. And whether it's, you know, moving a, a larger class to say the library or to the career center or something like that within the buildings to, to give that social distancing in that space for a given day, we'll, we'll figure out what we can do to make it work. Um, or some of the smaller classes that we might have based on selections, maybe at those classrooms have to swap with some of the larger classrooms just so we can, um, get students into the building safely.
Okay, that's good to hear. Thank you so much.
It's going to be a lot of work, but we'll do our best, you know?
A lot of work.
Thank you, everyone, for, for putting all the work into this. I'm, I'm really excited to see people going back.
Thank you, Mr. Gao. Um, and thank you, Mr. Burns. I kind of have a similar question for you as I have for Mr. Fosorano, um, regarding that switch, um, from the remote time to the hybrid time, which is normal time for school start. When we make that switch on the 27th, should we have to back up hybrid and go back to remote on any given circumstance, whether it be, um, lack of staffing or the cases spike even more than they are right now? I guess my question is, um, can we have a decision, um, between now and, uh, the 27th, I guess I would say, or the 19th for middle school? Can we have a decision on what the plan is for start times? Like, will we be going back and forth? Or will we just say, here's the new start time and it stays forever? I don't have any skin in that game other than as a parent. Um, and as Mr. Fosorano said, for my family, it's only an hour. So I can wake my kid up an hour early. I'm, I'm here for it. Uh, but I think especially for high schoolers in that developmental age, um, two hours, um, might be difficult for some families. And switching might be difficult, but I don't know what's best for you or your staff or I'm talking too much about this. So the question is, um, is it possible to have a decision before hybrid starts on whether or not that will switch back and forth or whether or not it will remain the same?
Yeah, I think, um, I think like Mr. Fosorano said earlier, I think, you know, it's as simple as a phone call out to families and stating that, you know, much like what we have, uh, delayed opening, you know, and Dr. Mosley calls and says they were, it's a two-hour delayed opening. I think a call similar to that either, uh, you know, the night before, if Mr. Richard and I know that we're not going to be able to staff or, um, or if it's a district-wide call, um, that we're not in that right zone, that we can say we're going to follow the remote schedule from semester one and we have that posted on our school website and things like that. I think, you know, I would like, personally, I would like to probably follow that schedule just to take advantage of the opportunity for our students, um, to not have to get up as early. And, um, we know a lot of our high school students, you know, either, um, work or they stay up late and, you know, they get a lot of their schoolwork done during the nighttime. So I think, you know, being able to take advantage of allowing them, uh, an extra hour sleep in the morning prior to office hours or prior to getting in and logging in, um, for their class on a given day, if they don't necessarily need to utilize that school time in the morning, I think that would be ideal in my opinion. You know, I'm speaking for myself here, but.
I would, uh, Nate, I think the only time where it might get different is, um, some of these decisions might be made building by building. So for example, if, um, Nate, you know, wakes up and sees a sub list and North has to go remote that day, but South is able to run. We have so many kids that share classes, we probably would have to stay on that 7:20 start because we couldn't have, uh, classes where kids need to be at North at nine o'clock for first block, but yet South's class at 7:20. So we're, we've been talking about that. So I think that'd be the only time where if it's an individual school that's, can go remote, uh, we might have to stay to that schedule. But if we're both going remote, then we could probably start at nine o'clock.
Thanks, Keith.
Okay, well, I will leave that in your capable hands along with, uh, Mr. Parker and Dr. Mosley, um, to kind of get back to us and parents, um, so people know what to expect, um, going into it. I think people, um, people like to know what to expect, um, as much as is reasonably possible, um, during this really extraordinary time. So thank you so much for all the thought you've put into it. Dr. Mosley and then Ms. Gilio had, um, something to say as well.
I'll wait, I'll, I talked, I've talked too much. Ms. Gilio, you go first. Go, please, please.
Okay, um, first of all, I want to thank everyone for all of this information tonight on the hybrid. And I'm hoping that we can roll it out the way we're planning to do. It sounds great. Um, it's wonderful to hear from administrators and teachers, um, who are there in the schools in the classroom, because I kind of miss being in the schools now that I've been out for a year. I did want to add something about remote learning that I think is a positive, um, expression of how it goes. For the past six days, my daughter has been visiting and staying with me for the month of December from Brooklyn, New York, where she's a music teacher. And for the past couple of days, I've been watching her prepare remote lessons, lessons for her students. Today she invited me to actually participate in her middle school classes. So I sat through a fifth grade class, a sixth grade class and a seventh grade music class, um, where she was, she was doing the class completely remotely from here to Brooklyn. And I saw how much time it took for her to put together this half hour class. But when I got to sit and, and participate with the kids, um, I was just amazed. They were so engaged, they were so excited. And the lesson was just wonderful. I, even if she weren't my daughter, I would have been really inspired. But I, I just want to say that for a lot of us, we talk about, you know, we talk about the hybrid and the remote. We know the teachers and the, and the administrators are working hard, but I actually got to see it in person and it was very moving for me, as is all the work you're all doing. So I want to thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Gilio. Dr. Mosley?
I guess I'll do this, if, if, is there any more questions about the high school before we jump to the poll? That's, that's my final question. And then I'll say what I'm going to say and then we'll jump to the polls, the poll.
Go ahead, Mr. Gao.
Just had, um, one super quick thing that just popped in my head. Um, forgive me if this, this was already covered. I came in a bit late, but, um, I was just wondering, I know when we did the reopening plan a while back, we were talking about how like if a COVID case does occur, that we need some sort of plan that says like, okay, we'll quarantine whatever section of the building that the case was found in or, or some sort of plan like that. I'm just wondering, in this hybrid plan that we have right now, do we have that?
Yeah, we've worked, uh, closely with National Public Health and, um, that plan is in place and working to determine contact tracing and, um, you know, uh, seating charts and things like that and determine, you know, where that student went on a given day. So, um, we'll be able to, to trace that and figure out, um, who would be considered a close contact and what quarantining needs to occur.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gao. And I, I just want to throw out there, um, my mother works at a school in Massachusetts. And they've been back. And so they've gone through a couple instances where they've had to quarantine, um, a classroom or several classrooms. And it, it turned out less confusing than I had expected. So nobody wants to do that and we hope that everyone stays safe and healthy. But it, I really thought it would be a lot more difficult to do than it turned out. So that was good. Dr. Mosley, I, I don't see any other hands. So, um, I think I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to you, Dr. Mosley.
I'll just, we've talked about all three levels, hybrid. This is a plan. They're the best laid plans, but there's a lot of flexi. I think, Ms., I can't remember who asked the question, what, what can parents expect in the hybrid? All, all I would say is that things will change and can change with one phone call, with one email, and we have to be flexible. Uh, if I can pick on the high school a little bit, and because we talked about this in our meetings earlier, um, there may be a time where Nate Burns and, and, and Keith Richard just might say, we, we have to go fully remote today because we don't have enough staff. That's a level of flexibility that has to happen. They might say, you know, blocks one and two, there's, we can't have, we can't facilitate class because of, of staffing. So there is a level of uncertainty with, with hybrid that I just want the public and the board to know. Right now, what Nate and Keith have proposed, there are two cohorts, A and B. They, when, when the kids come back, they may decide they need three cohorts or 14 cohorts. I don't know. But we've got to let them, and if there's any questions about cohorts, about timing or anything, it has to start at the building level. It has to be with these guys because I don't, to get into the nitty gritty, we, we, we're going to be, I, I don't know all, all of the nitty gritty with the buildings and it's I, I don't know all, all of the nitty-gritty with the buildings and it's going to change frequently when we start to call kids back, have kids back and the staff. So I know today, some people, I think uh Mr. Fazarono said, we don't have all of the details and he's right, we don't, because we've never done this before. We never had all the kids back in this environment. And it's all against the backdrop of rising cases of COVID, not just in New Hampshire, but I would say in the entire nation. So um, you know, these got, you know, everyone included. You know, certainly, we just ask that the conversation start at the, the building level. Um, working with Nate and, and not just Nate, but the entire building principals, because I think Ms. uh, um, I think uh Ms. Galera said it, I can't remember, it was um Ms. O'Connell said, said it, and I can't, and thank you. What works in their cohort or in their building could be completely different than what works at the high school. It could be completely different at the middle school. One middle school might have something going on because of staffing, but Mr. Fazarono's fine and he'll be fine for the rest of the year. We really don't know until we actually have the kids back. All right. With that said, we'll transition, I, people, I, I, can I just call it the poll? Because I think we're using different languages, language, some of you are using survey. That's confusing me because I'm calling it a poll. So um, Ms. Hines, I, I, I think there's always the intent and then what comes out of the poll. So the intent is to get information from staff, I mean, from, from parents. So um, Ms. Hines, if you could, you know, and Stacy and the administrator, we, when we write polls or surveys, we run it through a hundred and fifteen, what I call lenses or filters, and it feels like we still get it wrong. Oh, we, we still try to get it the best we can. Um, I wouldn't say we get it wrong, we just, we, we're just trying to gather information from, from our families so that we can provide that to our, 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 our principals so that they can start planning for second semester. That is the intent. Um, it, and given who you are, wh- where you're reading it, I think, I think everyone walks away with different interpretations of the poll. We have gotten emails back. Thank you, Stacy, Tara, Gabby, for really all fielding those questions. I think we've done a good job fielding them. So the intent of sharing this information, and I want to take that back, we didn't get it wrong. We just, we're trying to do the best we can, um, but it's never easy, particularly in this environment. And then we'll jump back to Ms. or um Ms. Oden's question. Is that fair enough, Ms. Hines?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, um, uh, Dr. Mosley issued um the most recent parent poll on Wednesday, last Wednesday, to ten thousand six hundred and thirty-nine parent email addresses. The poll asks parents primarily one question about whether they prefer their children to learn remotely during the second half of the school year. Uh, the purpose of the poll was to identify for the principals those students who will be learning just remotely, preferably through the, the remainder of the school year. Um, we know there are many families out there who are impacted by the pandemic in a way that they feel it's most safe to keep their children learning um remotely. So uh, the poll um is going to close. Uh, we decide next Friday, December eighteenth, we will issue reminders, probably two reminders, one this week, one next week um about that deadline. Um, and I believe I, I shared with uh Ms. Gilio and, and the other board, and she forwarded to the other board members um that um as of midday, we had four thousand one hundred and forty-five responses with forty-one percent responding yes to remote learning only. And keep in mind, that is just a snapshot of where we're at today. Um, so um, we'll see what the, uh, we'll certainly be issuing a, a, a final report to our principals and um to all of you to understand.
So I have a question for you, Ms. Hines.
Okay.
All right. So if I was a parent and I selected remote, what made a decision at the beginning of the year, do I still have to complete this poll?
Yes. We're looking to hear from all parents.
Uh, so, Ms. Hines, so is it fair to say that sometimes, so, so if I'm a parent, I have, I have three kids? Can I, and I want my kids to have three different, two different experiences. One could be hybrid, remote, remote. Do I fill it out three times, Ms. Hines?
Three times, yes, one for, uh, one for each child.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Oden, can you just, can you please ask your question that you asked it probably like fifteen minutes ago and then we can address it, please?
Okay. I, I was wondering if the four thousand one hundred and forty-five responses represented the number of parents who filled that out? And did it, did it include the number of students that they might have in the school system? Like, if a parent answered who had three children, were, were they counted three times?
No, the four thousand one hundred and forty-five responses is uh four thousand one hundred and forty-five records, which, which means four thousand one hundred and forty-five students.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the poll?
Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. Okay, let, let me go back to the question, Dr. Mosley. So if you have one child that wants hybrid and two that are gonna be remote, so on that poll, you wouldn't answer the hybrid, you would just ask, answer for the two on the remote, am I correct? Because the, the other one would just be moot, because they wouldn't be um on the remote, am I correct? You have three kids.
Yep.
Two are remote.
Mm-hmm.
One's hybrid, but the poll's only for remote, so you would not, or you would only answer for the two students, am I correct?
No, uh, if you looked at the content of, of the poll, uh, y- yes, you would file and, and complete all nine questions for the two children who you want to have learn remotely. And then for that third child, you would respond no, but there would still be a record generated. So we would know that for that child, the parent is receptive uh to the child learning either in hybrid or, or full-time. They're not um designating that child to learn remotely only.
Okay, and it's really clear that parents understand this. Because we're, we're clarifying it again tonight and I'm asking the question again because the poll, what I understood the poll to be was really just to find out how many students were going to be remote and remote only.
Yes, and um as Dr. Mosley had mentioned, um, I, I've been fielding a lot of questions and I know um Tara and Gabby have too. I think I had over a hundred um emails submitted through the COVID-nineteen at Nashville.edu email address and, and that seems to be quite clear with the families. They actually have other questions. So uh my sense is they're understanding because that's what we did um several months ago in August. Uh, it was the same format that you needed to file a response for each of your school-aged children.
Okay, but in August, we had a lot of issues. Every time these polls or surveys, whichever you want to call them, go out, there's always been like glitches and-
For the August survey, we had ten thousand responses, so considering we have just over, or about eleven thousand students, I think it was a very successful poll.
Good, good. And at the end, again, I just wanna, you know, I keep hearing about, you know, we um, the environment, this environment, this environment. And, you know, I'm seeing schools all over in Massachusetts, even New York, Salem, New Hampshire, that did a full opening of schools and remote. They did full and remote, no hybrid. And everybody, from what I'm understanding, is working out really good. And this was, in Salem was July ninth, twenty twenty, they came up with this plan. And here we are, December ninth, and we're still trying to get things put down on paper and get kids back into school, hopefully in January. And we haven't really solidified anything yet because of all these questions that we keep coming back to the same thing over and over and over again without finishing anything up. So I can't understand why some districts can have a full opening, full-day school and remote, and we couldn't even do that. Granted, they're not as big a district, but there's big districts in Massachusetts, and I speak to people all the time. Where I work, they recognize me and we just have conversations and I've got people talking to me all the time and um, I guess I just don't understand this. So why other districts in the state, even the governor said to me, like eighty-one districts were open, full-time and remote, and Nashville wasn't. So um, yeah, and I'm gonna keep harping on it and I just wrote a whole report for the um Board of Health on curfews and gave all the statistics and sent it off to them last night. Because I do my research and I do my homework. And so all the facts I gave them about the environment out there with cases, um, I, I've just, we, we have to stop looking at the environment type of thing and look at the kids, the suicides, the depression, and that was all in the report. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Johnson. Uh, Mr. Burns, did I see your hand?
Yeah, I just wanted to add something to what Stacy was saying um when Ms. Johnson asked about, you know, does every parent have to respond? And I think um the important piece to know is that, yes, we do need it because the schools are gonna be following up with any parents that don't respond for each of the kids. So, you know, at the high schools, we have, you know, almost four thousand students between the two of us. So, you know, if we only end up with a thousand responses at each school, that's a thousand calls. And each building's gonna have to make the parents to try to get an answer one way or another. So I think it is really integral that every parent responds for every one of their students within the, within the district.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. I'm certain um that you guys all have been giving um enough of your own personal time that you don't need to be calling us all um over school vacation when you should be relaxing with your families. So um, parents, please, please respond um by next Friday so that our staff can have some time off that they have more than earned. Um, I just wanted to follow up on something that Mrs. Johnson said. Um, so we have the remote, not remote option. Um, it was my understanding, going way back to August, that um, because this question's for you, Dr. Mosley, Dr. Mosley, that your original plan for hybrid was that as case numbers went down, that hybrid would transition through phases back to, you know, assuming that we get back to the green one day where uh community transmission is low and our staffing issues are also low, that we would eventually step up potentially to full day. And so, like in my brain, I'm thinking, we don't need a full-day option right now because our plan called for a gradual increase over time as we see that it is safe to do so. Am I, like, making that up or imagining that?
I think we talked to, I-
You can say yes, that I have extrapolated that incorrectly, because that's important.
I think we've kicked around a hundred and ten plans and we're probably gonna kick around two hundred and fifty more. That's, that's my, my, my response. And if we can get the kids back in school safely, hybrid or fully in person, we're gonna do it. That's it. If we can get the staff in front of the kids safely, hybrid, in person, we're going to do it. We're gonna try the best we can. I think the most promising thing, and I had, and talk about fielding phone calls, we're all been fielding phone calls. I think the most promising thing is really the vaccines coming out. You know, and I'd love, love to see our teachers and our kids be, you know, uh, cut to the front of the line, I guess, to get our schools really back and get that vaccine for our kids. I, I think that's our first, what I say, weapon against this, this virus. Now, with that said, um, you know, we were going on, um, Stacy posted them just recently. There were CDC requirements, C, CDC regu- regulations that were in place during the summertime. They have since changed. The last iteration of those guidelines are, are posted on our website. Uh, we also had a different technical advisory during the summertime, kind of fast forward now. That technical advisory has since changed as well. Um, so, you know, there, I don't know, I'm not gonna confirm whether you're imagining it or not. I think we, we kicked around a lot of different plans. I'm also gonna be very honest with you and the public and everything. We presented three hybrid plans tonight. When the kids come back and this thing is really, the plan is actually implemented, the plans may change again to accommodate all of, all of the variables we talked about. So um, I, and, and that's okay, because we don't really know what it's gonna feel like until we actually do this. Whether it's internet connectivity, students coming into the building, attendance for, for our faculty, even our staff, I'll use this kind of a thinking out loud here for a second. We don't really know how many kids or families are going to show, uh, are, are gonna select hybrid. It could be, I would just pick who, who's, I keep picking on Keith, I don't know, where, where's Mr. Burns? Mr. Burns? Mr. Burns, at the end of Jan- January, could have two thousand kids coming in for hybrid or two. That's a reality. Um, and he'll have to make adjustments according to the staff he has.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley, and I think your, your point towards giving um all of our faculty some grace in this time um is well taken. Um, so, so I appreciate it. Um, Ms. Johnson, you had another question?
Yes, thank you. And I keep bringing this up. The director of the CDC, Redfield, says schools aren't COVID-nineteen super spreaders, new data suggests. So if Salem is doing it right and other schools are doing it right, and when they have a case, they work with it, they close down whatever areas they have to and then reopen. And if students, kids are not super spreaders here, I don't understand. Maybe I'm missing something, but I doubt it, because I read so much, because being on the board more than I would ever read. And we're talking about the vaccine. There's been severe side effects in England with some of the vaccines, with healthy people dying. So we're waiting for a vaccine to hopefully open up the schools and what percent of the parents don't want the vaccine? And I've just written some LSRs that doesn't demand that kids need to be vaccinated, and I'm hoping it's gonna go through the Senate. That if we're waiting for some of this, that what are you gonna do? Parents don't have to vaccinate now their students to come into school. But one time, we would not, a state that you had to vaccinate because of religious and other reasons. And my son, I couldn't because he had a severe allergic reaction to the MMR. So there's a lot of variables here. So if we're waiting for that miracle cure, we need to learn to live within the realms that we have right now. And the realms is, what do we do about getting the, our students back into school that are not super spreaders according to the CDC? If we're gonna go by the science and we're gonna go by the CDC recommendations, here it is. And I keep bringing it up, and I know some people are probably bored with me about bringing this up, but if we keep talking about the science, Bobby Bagley talks about the science, she came to us, everybody else does, here it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, um, and I appreciate you um sharing your thoughts on that with us again. Um, tonight, I want to um really stay laser-focused on uh the hybrid plans that we have, um, because the purpose was to provide some um education and instruction for both the board and families out there on what we have approved. And then um at another meeting, um, we can certainly um schedule to talk about uh adjustments that may or may not need to be made as we move forward. Um, so I saw a couple hands pop up. Um, I saw Ms. Bishop and then I saw Ms. Gilio. Um, if somebody else had a hand and I missed you, I apologize. Um, I'll get you after um these lovely ladies. So, go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
So I, I, I'm hearing you on staying laser-focused on this is an educational opportunity for parents and community members in regards to what hybrid looks like in what, in regards to what their, their kids are signing up for, which I, I, I feel more confident as a mom um after hearing all of this, just we get to ask the, the ridiculous questions that keep us up at night. Um, so I, I appreciate it, but I had initially raised my hand because I had a, a response to Ms. Johnson, which was in disagreement with what she said, but she and I can have that in an email offline, which is something I respect about this board, so I have nothing to say.
Um, uh, I appreciate your restraint, Ms. Bishop. Um, so-
Occasionally, you'll get that.
Okay, well, thank you. And I think it's okay for differing board members to have different opinions, just like everybody in the community has different opinions. Um, we're in an unprecedented time. Um, so I appreciate people staying focused tonight on not um trying to, to change things right now because um going into the holidays, especially and with changing trimesters and changing semesters, we really need to let our families know um what our plan is and not make major changes um or not put new things in that we haven't seen already. Does that make sense? Okay, um, Ms. Gilio?
Um, again, I appreciate your need to stay laser-focused, so I had actually asked to speak um before you said that, but I just, I would, I would like to ask Ms. Johnson to maybe share what she's speaking about with the rest of the board at some point. And I would like very much to know the date of this report from, from the CDC, because I have been following them uh since the summer and there have been many changes made from recommendations they made that they- and there have been many changes made from recommendations they made that they then reversed. So going forward at another meeting, if we want to talk about the CDC, maybe we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. And Ms. Johnson, would you mind emailing the board the article that you have gotten so that we can all make sure that we're reading the same thing?
Yeah, I don't have a problem doing that, but sometimes when I do it, I'm called out saying that I'm violating the right-to-know law. But as long as everybody understands that this has been part of the meeting, and it's gone out, and the public has the right to see all these documents I'm sending out, I don't have a problem doing that.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Dr. Mosley?
On just a lighter note, there at the Arlington Community Center this Saturday, from 1:00 to 3:00, there is a craft fair there, and they're giving out free Christmas trees to any community member that needs a Christmas tree or holiday spirit. I think there's a little candy there or anything like that. I'm looking at you, Ms. Fulton, Ms. Fulton. So all of our families out there, holiday spirit, go to the community center from 1:00 to 3:00, that 36 Arlington Street in Nashua. And you can get a free Christmas tree, all set up. They'll put Chief Carrigan, the fire department, everyone will be there. I'll be stopping by there, too. Social distancing, though, just to get our families any type of resources they need for the holiday.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. You stole my thunder. I had written it down from, from Ms. Timmons. So fresh and artificial trees, so people with allergies can also pick up a tree. And they have craft kits to take home and do some winter crafts, so.
Oh, wonderful.
Our friends at the Arlington Street Community Center do so much for our families, and so a big thank you to them. And thank you, Dr. Mosley, and all of the principals and administrators and teachers who came out tonight to provide this instructional opportunity for us. I feel, speaking only for myself personally, I felt it was very valuable this evening, and I feel like I now understand, and when people ask me questions, I have some idea of what's going on. But I still think that people should be speaking to their principals and utilizing that covid-19@nashua.edu email address if they have lingering questions after tonight's meeting. Did anyone else have anything else before I call for an adjournment? I don't see any hands. And I'm on two pages now, so if anyone would like to make a motion, shout it out.
I would like to make the motion that we adjourn. This is Gilio.
Second the motion.
I heard you too, Mrs. Zee. Go ahead and call a roll.
Okay, on the motion to adjourn, Raymond Guarino votes yes. Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Sandra Zee?
Yes. Good night.
Good night. Good night, Ms. Zee. Jennifer Bishop?
Yes, and I love your earrings, Ms. Zee.
Sharon Gilio?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Heather Raymond?
Yes.
Audie Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. We are adjourned at 7:58 PM.
Okay, thank you, everybody.